Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, March 9, 2020. We are reconvening for open session. There's no report of action that was taken during closed session. By my watch, it is seven o'clock, and I'm calling this meeting order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. For invocation, we will have Councilmember Raymond Hamada leading us, and for the Pledge of Allegiance, will be led by Director of Public Safety, Mr. Joe Hockman. Please stand.
Okay, let us pray. Dear Father, again, we thank you for this evening provided to us to conduct the business of our community and the many blessings given to us. We ask for your hedge of protection to our armed service personnel home and abroad, to our first responders, and to all those that keep our communities safe and healthy. Father, we pray for community unity, progress, and calm as our nation deals with the challenge of coronavirus. We ask for your strength and perseverance. Father, we thank you for your presence with all that again call Bellflower home and work in play. Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we undertake tonight's work and agenda business items. Father, we honor you with our service as we continue to be a light in the region, state, and nation. We ask this all in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all."
May be seated. Thank you. Next up are city council announcements, and I'll start that off. I am sure you have all heard of the coronavirus. However, the risk of transmission of the coronavirus within LA County remains low. Common symptoms in an infected person may include fever, cough, and shortness of breath or difficulty breathing. Standard recommendations to prevent infection spreading includes washing your hands with open water frequently for 20 seconds, covering your nose and mouth with your elbow or tissue when coughing or sneezing, and staying home when you are sick. To learn more information about the coronavirus, please visit www-publichealth.lacounty.gov. Mayor Protem Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In mid-March, households will begin receiving official Census Bureau mail with the detailed information on how to respond to the 2020 census. You'll be able to respond to the census in three ways. Excuse me. I'm getting all choked up over the census.
It's a virus.
It's a virus, yeah. I got it from him. Online, by phone, or by mail. The census is an opportunity to shape the future of Bellflower as to provide vital information. It is critical that everyone is counted only once. Please do your part and participate in the upcoming census. For more information, please visit www.2020census.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem Dan Coops. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that a deadline to donate items for the Bellflower Spring Basket Program is fast approaching. The Bellflower Volunteer Center, with community groups, schools, service clubs, churches, and other organizations, provide supplies for the students' needs. These spring baskets include much-needed items like school supplies, books, toys, balls, puzzles, toiletries, socks, and more. If you'd like to get involved as a volunteer, please contact the Volunteer Center at (562) 804-1424, extension 2331. The Bellflower deadline to drop off any donations and all donations at the Bellflower Center is next Thursday, March 19th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ray Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the SCORE, we'll be hosting a free small business workshop discussing how to make a do-it-yourself video for your business. The event is tomorrow, Tuesday, March 10th, sorry for the late notice now, from 6:00 PM to 8:45 PM at the Southeast Los Angeles Workforce Development Board Center in Cerritos located near 183rd and Studebaker Road. For more details and to RSVP, please visit www.orangecounty-score.org. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sunny Santanis.
Thank you, Mayor. Save the date. Join the Sanitation District for their annual Earth Day event taking place on Saturday, April 18th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This event will feature fun educational activities for all ages, such as a tour of the water reclamation plant, which is very interesting, music and dance performances, and many other activities while you learn about environmental issues. The Sanitation District Administration Office is located at 1955 Workman Mill Road, Whittier, California, 90601. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Santanis. So, up next, item 9B is a recognition of National Women's History Month, which tonight will be accepted by the Bellflower Women's Club. So, if I could ask my colleagues to join me over on the side. Thank you. Are we good? Absolutely. Right? We can all squeeze in here. Well, good evening. You know, it's such a distinct honor to come up here and be able to proclaim a special month for not only our city, right, but when we recognize it nationally, but so last month we did, we were able to recognize National African American History Month, and to have National Women's History Month, to be able to be recognized in our city once again, really is a true and distinct honor. The contributions of women, not only in our city but nationally, and not only in the past but now, are really historical, and frankly, without the contributions of women in our city, in our country, this country would not be what it is. So, and again, on behalf of myself and my colleagues here, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the special proclamation, and I hope that everyone joins me, not only today, but this whole month and every day of every year, to recognize really the historic and significant contributions that women make to our society, to our country, and our nation. So, with that, I'll read this. It says, "In appreciation, in appreciation, the City of Bellflower proclaims Women's History Month." There's a lot of where S's here. I'm going to read them all because it's absolutely merited. So, the 2020 theme for National Women's History Month is visionary women, champions of peace and nonviolence. The 2020 National Women's History theme presents the opportunity to honor women who have led efforts to end war, violence, and injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways, and American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in our nation through volunteer services and in the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and many others, creating a more fair and just society for all. And women have been a leading force for social action and a voice for equity and empowerment in Bellflower, and Women's History Month will celebrate the local organizations who work to honor and improve the lives of women in the community, especially Seropimis International of Bellflower. Therefore, I, Juan Garza, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do proclaim March 2020 as National Women's History Month. And with that, it is my distinct honor to hand this proclamation, and please join me in a round of applause. It's much merited.
On behalf of everyone here and all of the women in our Women's Club who cannot be here tonight as well, thank you very much. We do appreciate the recognition, and we look forward to contributing further to Bellflower.
Absolutely. Thank you so much again for coming here this evening and celebrating with us and accepting this. So, again, thank you.
Hammer's over here.
I got a pretty good-sized club.
She's calling it. Yeah.
You're okay?
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Onto item number 10, public comments. Mrs. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Just a friendly reminder to everybody, please, a friendly reminder on the three-minute mark, please. So, is there anybody in the public that wishes to make any public comments this evening?
Yes, I do myself.
You're welcome.
Some of this is, I was here earlier, some of this over this homeless stuff. There's more people than what they've counted earlier, the 150. We're getting inundated with these from other cities, and I don't think the sheriff cares because he's not doing much of anything. This city hall, I mean, not city hall, but this substation over here is worthless, waste of time, waste of money, does nothing for the citizens of this town. It needs to be chopped off and gotten rid of because the taxpayers' dollars can be used better in better places. Now, this three-minute thing, I'm still upset about this, and I think it's totally wrong because for anybody to put something in like that, and do you know what I even spoke about last time I was here? Because you were so busy saying 30 seconds, 10 seconds, and all this crap. One, you're just a token councilman up here. That's all you are. You were put up there because of Johnny Drayer and his lawsuits going against the city and all this crap.
Hey, John, you don't have to be that way.
I don't care. I'm tired of it, and I'm just saying what I'm going to say. And especially when another gentleman got up here, was speaking, that he always does, about the veterans and giving his little spiel, and all I hear out of it is, "Well, your time is up. It doesn't matter what you're speaking on, your time is up," and I don't care. So, I'm just irritated, and the sanctuary cities, I've asked you that before, get no answer about it. It's just very irritating down here anymore. And three minutes is a bunch of crap.
Thank you. Are there any of the speakers here this evening? Great. Welcome.
Miguel Gagmaster Garza, the implementer of the three-minute infectious viral verbal-oral communication portion of the Bellflower City Council meeting. Adolf Hitler would have been proud of you. I want to pay my respects, commendation, and thanks to two true American councilmen up there on the dais, Councilman Dan Coops and Ray Dutton, for upholding the very essential principles of the First Amendment right as guaranteed by our United States Constitution. You two are good, true representative examples of what good old American government is truly about. Limitation of speech in this, the People's House in Bellflower, is more than disgusting and rotten in its application on Monday, February 24th, 2020, because that meeting was a real short one that lasted one hour and eight minutes total with no agenda items to be discussed. Consent portion was passed by with a few words in short order. The meeting was a Treasury Report status of the financial picture of the city, covering many aspects and concerns, and consumed a major part of the 68-minute duration to an almost-empty chamber audience of maybe 10 people total. About six people spoke at the public oral communication portion of the meeting with Gagmaster Dictator Garza second-timing it orally against city businessman activist John Butts, also a Vietnam War veteran, who informed council about his concerns for conditions he observed at a mobile home park near his business, mainly for the children and the homeless there. He was doing a good deed for all people over there concerned, and he was quickly cut off at the three-minute virus time limit, which angered him so abruptly, threatening him with removal from meeting. Here is a good concerned citizen trying to help our city, being pushed down by the blatantly disrespectful dictator Gagmaster Garza. Next, I spoke up, inquiring of the entire city council whether my annual hero's tribute to our deceased military war veterans on behalf of the city would still be allowed as it goes over the three-minute oral virus time limit. This occurs on November 11 and December 7, time period of remembering Pearl Harbor and because of World War II, because that was the war that saved this entire world by America with the Allies' help. Only did we be told by dictator Garza, Gagmaster, that he didn't care, so long as I could do it in the three-minute oral virus time.
Mrs. Sebaco, your three minutes are done. So, if you can please step off the microphone. Thank you so much.
I have to run against you, Ray, I guess.
Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to make any comments this evening?
That's why I got this muzzle on tonight.
All right. So, if seeing nobody, then go ahead. We're going to move on to item 11A. Mrs. Stewart.
Mayor, can I just say something before we go into the...
Sure, before we open up.
Just for the information of the public, the change in the procedure to limit the public comment to three minutes is not, was not a unilateral decision of the mayor. It was voted 5-0 by the council, just to let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember.
Thank you, Sunny, for clarifying that.
Thank you. So, item 11A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action, conduct a public hearing to receive comments during the development of the 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan, fiscal year 2021, Annual Action Plan, and 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, and Travis Isas staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The city is conducting a public hearing to receive comments during the development of the 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan, fiscal year 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan, and 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Every five years, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, requires entitlement jurisdictions that receive community development block grant funds, also known as CDBG, and home investment partnership program funds, also known as Home, to submit a consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan for the use of CDBG and Home Funds. The consolidated plan is then carried out through annual action plans, and the annual action plan is a one-year plan, which describes the anticipated goals and activities for the upcoming program year. This first year's action plan will be included as a component of the consolidated plan. A condition of the consolidated plan requires the city to affirmatively further fair housing and conduct an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, also known as the AI. The AI is a review of policies, procedures, and practices within the community that affect the location, availability, and accessibility of housing, and current residential patterns and conditions relating to fair housing choice. The consolidated plan process consists of multiple steps, which includes, number one, the determination of needs, goals, and resources; number two, the setting of goals and priorities; number three, the administration of programs; and number four, the evaluation of program performance. Throughout the consolidated plan process, citizen participation is encouraged through workshops, public hearings, and surveys. The following outreach and citizen participation efforts were made by the city. A community need survey was made available online and at City Hall. Two community outreach meetings were held at City Hall. A public service notice of funding availability was released in January, and a technical assistance workshop was held on January 29th at City Hall. A city council workshop was held on January 27th, and the city is also holding two public hearings, and will have a 30-day public comment period on the draft consolidated plan and analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. All public notices were published in the Wave newspaper, posted on the city's website, and posted at city facilities. The following table is a summary of the draft consolidated plan goals and priorities. The first goal to improve and conserve existing affordable housing will be accomplished through the home improvement program. The second goal to develop affordable housing will be accomplished by contributing community housing development organization funds to a qualified CHODO project. And the third goal to promote equal housing opportunity will be accomplished through the Fair Housing Foundation. The fourth goal of neighborhood preservation will be accomplished through code enforcement. The public services goal will be accomplished through the Bellflower Volunteer Center. And the sixth goal of job creation and retention will be accomplished through Kingdom Causes' Bellflowers Good Soils Program. And the seventh goal addresses the city's obligation to repay a Section 108 loan taken out in 2004 for downtown improvements. And the administration goal will help fund housing consultant and staff time spent on administering these programs and ensuring the programs are in compliance with complex HUD regulations. CDBG funds must be used for activities that benefit low-income residents or for eliminating blight. The CDBG program can finance activities such as community and public facilities, infrastructure improvements, public services, business assistance, and economic development. No more than 20% can be spent on administration, and no more than 15% can be spent on public service activities. In fiscal year 2020-2021, the city will receive approximately $915,000 in CDBG funds. This is about a $60,000 reduction from our current year entitlement. The city anticipates approximately $176,000 in carryover and expects to receive $5,500 in program income. The total estimated funding is about 1.1 million. The proposed CDBG budget and activities for fiscal year 2020-2021 are as follows. Per CDBG regulations, up to 15% of the city's allocation can be used to support public service activities that provide vital services in the community. So, staff received and approved three applications from the Fair Housing Foundation, Kingdom Causes' Bellflowers Good Soils Program, and the Bellflower Volunteer Center. The Fair Housing Foundation has requested $18,000. They provide fair housing services to residents to prevent discrimination. Their services include, but are not limited to referrals, investigations, case management, litigation, and resolving landlord-tenant disputes. Grantees in the CDBG program have a responsibility to affirmatively further fair housing, which is why some sort of fair housing service is mandatory. Since this is a mandatory activity, it does not need to be included as a public service for the 15% public service cap. Kingdom Causes' Bellflower has requested $35,000. They are currently funded at $25,000 this fiscal year, but due to the reduction in the city's annual allocation this upcoming fiscal year, the 15% public services cap has been reduced by about $8,500. So, in order to fully fund the Bellflower Volunteer Center with CDBG, Kingdom Causes' allocation would need to be reduced to about $16,500. Kingdom Causes offers employment opportunities through their Good Soils Industries program. The program assists in hiring residents that are underemployed and unemployed. They also provide on-the-job training, certification programs, and job acquisition skills for those who may have a criminal record or are at risk of being homeless. The Bellflower Volunteer Center has requested approximately $121,000. The Volunteer Center recruits, trains, supervises, and recognizes individuals who volunteer their time to serve the low- and moderate-income residents of Bellflower. All three public service agencies participated in the program in prior years and met their goals without any issues. Up to 20% of CDBG funds can be used for administration of the program. Staff has budgeted about $183,000 for staff and consultant time in fiscal year 2020-2021. Each year, CDBG partially funds code enforcement activities that address blight in CDBG-eligible areas. The city has budgeted approximately $262,000 to continue these activities. The city also continues to budget its debt service payments for its Section 108 loan that was used for several capital improvements in the downtown center area. This was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004, and this loan will be paid off at the end of the five-year consolidated plan. Next are Home Funds. Home Funds are meant to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners, and must serve low-income households. Home Funds cannot be used for the construction or operation of an emergency shelter. Eligible uses of these funds include homeowner rehabilitation, the development of affordable housing, property acquisition for the development of affordable housing, homebuyer activities, and tenant-based rental assistance. and tenant-based rental assistance. No more than 10% of funds can be used for the administration of the programs, and at least 15% must be set aside for community housing development organizations. In fiscal year 2020, 2021, the city will receive approximately $369,000 in home funds. The city anticipates approximately 1.1 million in carryover. Program income varies annually based on loan principal, interest, and equity sharing payments returned to the city during the fiscal year. Staff is using a nominal amount of $1,000. The program income that the city receives is reinvested back into the home program. The total estimated funding is about 1.4 million dollars. Up to 10% of the city's annual allocation can be used for city administration of the program. Staff has budgeted about $37,000 for staff and consultant costs. Staff recommends budgeting $250,000 for the home improvement program, with $80,000 specifically set aside for mobile home improvement grants. The home improvement program provides loans and grants to qualified low-income homeowners who wish to make qualifying improvements to their home or repair health and safety issues. A total budget of about 1.1 million is set aside for one or more CHODO projects in fiscal year 2020, 2021. This amount includes a $784,000 carryover from the CHODO line item last year, and a CHODO must be a nonprofit agency that will rehabilitate or construct affordable housing for low-income residents. Staff is looking to release a CHODO request for proposal sometime during the next fiscal year. HUD has indicated that the city has a commitment deadline for a portion of the CHODO funds, which is September 2025. Therefore, the city has some time to vet a CHODO project and to build up the CHODO project fund to make an affordable housing project more feasible for a CHODO. The analysis of impediments to fair housing choice presents a demographic profile of the city, and it also assesses fair housing issues among specific groups, and evaluates the availability of housing choices for all residents, and analyzes the conditions in the private market and public sector that may limit the range of housing choices or impede a person's access to housing. The AI analysis is still being finalized by staff and our housing consultant, and will be available during the public comment period. Our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after consider- considering the evidence, schedule a second public hearing for a city council meeting on or after April 13, 2020, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation, staff is available for any questions or comments.
Very nice presentation, very comprehensive, thank you for that. Questions for my colleagues, councilmember Sonny Santenes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Travis, can you bring back the budget for CDBG?
Sure.
First, okay. So clarification on the section 108, that's basically a fixed payment we're gonna make until the, the loan is paid off?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's spoken for.
Mm-hmm.
Because what I'm trying to do is, um, I, I know that the Good Soils Industry is a very effective program, so I'm trying to see if there's something we can do to augment that budget of 16,500.
So, and that is also a public service?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be included in that 15% public service cap. So we have the Volunteer Center and Kingdom Causes' Good Soils Program. Those are the two programs that are a part of that 15% of the allocation that's set aside for public services.
Yeah, the dilemma is they're, they're all good programs, so it's hard to pull some money to put another, another line item, so I'm just hoping that 108 can give up some money, but that's not the case. Okay, alright, so can you, how about the, the, the home budget? There you go. Alright, so in the carryover, you mentioned about 2025, is that the drop down, drop dead date, so to speak, of, in terms of the future CHODO projects?
So that's about, there's just over-
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, yeah, there's just, um, over 200,000 of that 1.1 million would need to be committed by September 2025.
Okay, so, okay.
So just a portion.
Oh, just a portion, so what's the time limit for the 1, 1.065 million carryover?
Oh, the carryover funds?
Can we just carry it over if it's not just, there's no time limitation?
Right, right, so HUD suspended the commitment deadlines, so, um, as of right now, there is no deadline for that.
Okay, but hopefully we can use that money soon?
Yes.
Okay, so how many, how many CHODOS do we have in the city right now? A CHODO is the community, uh-
Housing Development Organization. Right, so the last project was the Partnership Housing and Habitat for Humanity project, so that was the one over off of Ramona Street.
Okay, how many other CHODOS do we have here in the city?
Do you mean that are in the city?
That didn't qualify to for this future CHODO project.
There are several that are qualified, we have one that's been certified right now, and that's Habitat, we're looking at others.
Habitat, and then, um, there's another one?
Kingdom Causes was, they stepped back because they couldn't meet the requirements, and Howard CDM is also a CHODO, and they're looking into being certified as an active CHODO in the city as well.
So, but right now we only have one certified CHODO, okay? I, I think we need to work on that to make sure that, uh, we have more choices in the city?
Yes, we, when it comes time to do an RFP for this, we would put that RFP out, and CHODOS from other cities, or CHODOS in general, could apply for those funds to do a project, and they would just have to get certified with the city as a city-certified CHODO to do the work in the city.
Okay.
So it would be open to all CHODOS.
Okay, very good. Now, in terms of the, the future CHODO projects, one, there was one thing that you mentioned about housing, um, is it the next, the next slide? Maybe not. Something about housing, um, development, affordable housing. Affordable housing. I think, I think it's a few, uh, it's a previous slide. You mentioned about affordable housing, and it has to be CHODO, it's your proposal? To be done by the CHODO?
Are you talking about the goals and priorities here that are up?
Oh, there you go, the, the, number two, development of affordable housing. So my question here is, uh, is that limited to CHODOS, or can the city develop a, uh, affordable housing? Can the city do that?
Short answer is anybody can develop affordable housing, that's who can take advantage of
So, so my point is, it's not limited to a CHODO.
Yeah, that should know.
If we find appropriate-
CHODOS are the instrument to spend the federal money that's available for.
But if we change our mind, we can, we can do it ourselves.
Correct.
Okay, very good, that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sonny Santenes, Mayor Potam Koops?
Yes, put back the chart that, uh, Sonny was looking at, the one with the different amounts there. So, the monies that you see allocated, there are pretty well all, there's not much room based on what we've just learned to reallocate those funds, they're, that's pretty well set in stone, correct?
So this is the proposed budget, so, um, the Volunteer Center you'll see there is at 121, 122,000 roughly, so that is their, um, budgeted, um, that, that is their budgeted amount for this next fiscal year. So for public services, we have about 138,000 that can go towards public services, so that's why you'll see we have the fully-funded Volunteer Center at 121,000, and then we also have Kingdom Causes, their Good Soils Program, and then fair housing, we do have to provide some sort of fair housing services, and then, um, administration is about 20% of, um, the CDBG allocation amount, and then we have code enforcement that is funded as well.
So the Volunteer Center requested 121,000, or that was their budget from previous years, or how was that never arrived at?
That's in the biennial city budget.
City budget, alright. So how much, um, when you have the administration, 182, 917, that figure needs to be 20% or less of the total in order to qualify, correct?
Correct, of the entitlement amount, so we have-
Of the entitlement amount?
Right.
So is there anything that we can do with that amount of money? We went to the max at 20%, can we reduce that, or is then, or how many employees, or what kind of consultants are you receiving with that amount of money?
So that includes our housing consultants, so they're also, also partially funded with, um, home funds, and then we have, um, multiple staff that are funded out of, um, the CDBG administration budget partially, so, um, we just try to leverage different funds, um, and it's usually staff that are involved with, um, the administration of the programs.
And so how many staff people are dedicated to this?
Um, we have about three staff.
Okay.
Three or four staff, including some finance staff as well that deal with, um, the finance portion of these funds.
Do any of these monies qualify to help support our homeless shelter?
So we have allocated, or actually reallocated, um, this current fiscal year's, um, public service, or I'm sorry, we have the, um, public facilities budget that was originally for Coke Park, and so that went, we had $300,000 of that went towards the construction of the homeless shelter.
Okay, how about CityNet, where do they fall into this?
So CityNet is actually funded with successor housing agency funds. Um, I believe too, um, that they're also funded with, um, I think it's the cannabis, um, permutee funds, but, um, as-
Education, wasn't it?
Educational.
Or education, right, the education funds, so, um, that's, that's where they're funded with, but it is, um, a different fund, so it's the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, and that's a fund within the successor housing agency.
So when we look at Good Soil Industry at 16.5, and you talked about an augmented amount as well, or is that the net, that's the most they're gonna get from us on every avenue of cash flow?
Further Good Soils Program.
But I mean, now, there are more money for, uh, Good Kingdom Causes than 16.5?
Yes, so we also have the, um, other portion of the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, um, funds their homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, so that's a separate program.
So how much does, when you add Good Soil Industries and, uh, Kingdom Causes together, how much did they get from the city?
So they receive $162,500 in successor housing agency funds, and then they have $16,500 in, um, the CDBG funds.
Quick calculations are occurring.
Close to 180.
Yeah, 1, 179,000.
Did, uh, Good Soil Industries get the same amount last year as they're giving, or projecting this year, or did that change?
Now, they, they received 25,000 last year, so-
So the bottom line, they're down 9,000 on the contribution this year?
Right, right, but they did submit also a budget to us, so a proposed project budget, which is roughly, um, $506,000, and then they estimate and project to receive about $496,000 in other funding sources.
So they found another person to work for that they're gonna be able to augment their, their revenue?
According to their proposed budget that they submitted to us with their application, they should be okay.
Sonny, does this help at all on what you were, you and I are on the same page on this?
Yeah, well, that's, as I said earlier, I mean, the dilemma is here, all the line items are basically justified.
No, it's more informational than discussion.
I know.
Well, you gotta remember too that there's a 15% cap on those funds, so you could fund Good Soils with additional money, but then you'd be reducing the Volunteer Center because you have, you still have to maintain that 15% cap, you can't throw money in from the other categories into that.
No, I get it, there are a lot of restrictions on what we can do.
Correct, yes.
And so Sonny and I are thinking alike, where are the monies at, and are there any ways that we can adjust them? Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Those are good questions, that's what we're here for, right, so, uh, Councilmember Raymond Juarez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, uh, my comment, um, is that I'm volunteer member of the Board of Directors of Kingdom Causes.
Disclosure.
Yes, I'll just disclose that. Um, we, yes, I mean, that entity makes every effort to, uh, seek funding, and, uh, recently there's been some successes, and of course, there's, there's some misses, but again, budgets are always tight, I mean, this one, I, again, all these, these maximums and so on, uh, and I think more so the, and again, last Jan-, I mean, just past January, we had that excellent study session workshop on this, and we, we kinda, kinda laid out some of the, some, maybe opportunities and, and do some shuffle, but, uh, again, you know, built-in restrictions, uh, and again, limited money, of course, here with, with these kind of funds, uh, it's gonna be tight, and, uh, uh, I mean, Kingdom Causes is very fortunate to, to receive other, other funding, and, and again, blessed to receive city funding too, to, to help, uh, towards, uh, their efforts. So, um, um, again, again, as a volunteer, uh, I don't have any financial interest on this, I, I am aware of their budgets, and, and, and again, it's every, everybody's struggling to, to meet those numbers, so, um, and, uh, they'll make every effort to, to seek other, you know, seek out, uh, get elsewhere, so, but, uh, I think because of everything that's laid out here, and, and the caps and restrictions and, you know, limits and so on, I, I think, I think, kinda like, here, this is where we're at, I, I thought maybe there might be some opportunity, again, um, um, on the home funds with CHODO, but this is not dealing with Kingdom Causes, but again, over time, we, you know, we've been kinda waiting here, you know, waiting for that next project, and, uh, and I know we, now we have a, a deadline, you know, but still, we're talking five years, and, and it's only a portion of the amount, so, uh, it's likely, uh, and it's probably prudent to, to, you know, I mean, continue with some carryover because I think we're gonna, we're bound to see that next project here within five years, so, and, and, and we're hearing that other, other entities are, are looking to become CHODOS, so, uh, at this point, I, I think staff has done their best to, to, to deal with what we have, and, and, uh, I think, uh, it, it appears still fair, and yes, not everybody's happy with it, but, but I, I think, uh, in just putting it on the balance, and, uh, I think it still comes across as, uh, uh, fair and, um, and, you know, productive for, you know, uh, you know, for the future here, so, um, uh, it's, like I said, it's, it's where we're at, so, um, and, uh, I think, I think the shuffling's not, not available unless it goes to extremes, but, um, uh, like I said, I think we, you know, uh, this is looking, this is looking as, as good as it gets, so, alright, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Dutton.
And with that said, uh, my colleagues, I concur, um, unfortunately, it is a budgeted, budgeted item in the Volunteer Center portion and whatnot, and there's only a couple of pots you can, you can pick that from, but, and it is what it is, uh, it was explained very good, I would, staff, you did an excellent job, because you answered three of my questions, and that just, my colleagues' questions, um, with that, I'm good.
Alright, great, thank you, Councilmember, same thing for me, I, I wish we had more to be able to distribute in way, but I think, uh, I think you've done a good job of balancing as many things as possible, and still being able to support crucial elements in our community, so I commend you for, for striking that balance, right, so, so with that, uh, I'll take a, a motion to open our public hearing?
So move.
Alright, motion in a second? Without, uh, without objection, that'll be the order? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to come up and make comments regarding item 11A? So seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing?
Have motion second?
Second.
So have a motion in a second, without objection, that'll be the order? Are there any other questions, gentlemen?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just don't want to make a comment because I'm the eternal optimist. Uh, I think five years from now, our discussion is gonna be very different, right? Because the section 108 loan repayment's gonna be gone.
Correct, yeah, the, the final payment is gonna be August 2024, so that's actually the last fiscal year of this consolidated plan period.
So I look forward to the discussion, where we have an extra half a million dollars to, to discuss. Thank you.
That's a great point.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned, Travis, at the very end, that, uh, Good Soils had a contract for $496,000 they didn't have before, is that right?
So it's not a contract, they just identified other funding sources in their proposal to us, so pretty much in their proposal, they requested $35,000, but, um, in their proposal, they identified three other funding sources that, um, amount to about $496,000, and this is for the Good Soils Program, and then they estimated, um, the total project, um, budget or program budget is $506,000.
Okay, now are those new to this year? They've never had these revenues before?
Um, I, I don't recall, um, I think some of them are because part of it is actually, um, program income that they receive, so it's like their enterprise fund, um, because pretty much they, they provide like landscaping services, so they do get funds for, um, you know, their services that their employees are providing.
Mr. Mata, can you shed any light on that? I'm, I'm seeing the 16.5, I think that's pittance compared to what it is receiving from other sources, maybe they don't even need the 16.5, they got 496,000.
Oh, no, no, you know, every, every dollar counts, I was saying, that's a general comment.
At the very end, he said four ninety-six. I think, well, wait, they're doing pretty good here.
There's still a lot to do, more to do, and, uh, I think, I think this is, this is numbers.
But you understand, I want the public to understand that, you know, we're not supporting this alone. But at the same time, this is a new, uh, I know that they got Kaiser as a new, uh, contract.
That's, that's been in the, yes, that was, that's been happening for about a year, yes. Uh, hopefully it continues to grow, but at this point, it's, it's not there yet, so.
They're not doing the work at Kaiser?
Oh, no, no, they definitely are, but.
I mean, they were, they were doing the work at Kaiser, but maybe they stopped.
Again, it, there's only so many Kaisers they can do.
No, I know, but they have the chance to do even more, correctly?
Well, they do have the chance, but they, again, has not been confirmed.
Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, great. Any more questions or comments?
Just a comment, uh, just something popped again in my mind. I think it was a couple of months ago, I did attend a, a group meeting with Congresswoman Sanchez. And during our discussions with her, uh, we pointed out CDBG and, and, you know, home funds and the lack of money that, 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 you know, again, you know, goes to those accounts. She responded and again, we're gonna, all those cities that, that were in attendance should be following up with her. She did, uh, use the P word, promise, that she would be, again, asking the hard questions to, uh, uh, back to Congress and, 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 and the appropriate departments and, uh, again, s- seek more, more funding. So, I mean, hopefully that happens, but again, we know it's never guaranteed, so. Alright, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for carrying that banner with, with such an influential, uh, member, council member. Any other questions or comments, gentlemen? If not, consider a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, schedule the second hearing for the city council meeting on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
Great, so is a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second by, uh, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, any abstentions? Any opposed? Alright, hearing none, the motion passes. Item number twelve, ordinances and resolutions for consideration, we have none. Item number thirteen, we have no items for consideration. Item number fourteen, consent calendar. Mr. Stewart.
This is a time of the council, recuses themselves for matters of conflict they may have or asked an item be polled for further consideration, authors if they choose to.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Are there any, any items that anybody wishes to conflict themselves out of? No?
Mr. Mayor, I will be recusing myself from item fourteen D and fourteen E because I have property conflicts within the parameters of those projects.
Okay, great. I have fourteen D and E for, uh, Mayor Potem Coops, any others? Alright, so seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the?
Move the consent calendar.
Alright, have a motion.
Second.
Second, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, great. So, item number fifteen, council reports, Councilmember Dutton.
Get out your raincoats. It's going to be raining for a week, I think. That's it.
Alright, great, thank you. Councilmember Sunny Santenes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things here. The mayor and I participated in the Read Across America Celebration at Ramona Elementary School. I read for the second grade students of Ms. Moran and it was kind of delightful to, to read for the students. So I read, I read a book of Dr. Seuss because it happened to be his birthday also on that day. Also, and congratulations to the YMCA of Los Angeles Beach Basin Bellflower for meeting their goal, fundraising goal for the year. There was celebration last, last Thursday and Councilmember Hamad and I attended that celebration. So it was a great event. Kudos to all our supporters, all the community leaders who participated and donated to this worthy fundraising event. And finally, last Sunday, I went to the Pancake Fundraising Breakfast sponsored by the Greater Balfour Little League. It was well-attended and thanks to the staff of our Sims Park or Parks and Recreation for the wonderful job that they have done. It was a great turnout and I'm glad that, um, Little League raised a lot of money for that event. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Mayor Potem Coops?
I am happy to announce that none of my friends or relatives passed away this week. So I don't have to, to, uh, conclude our meeting in anybody's memoriam. Nothing else to.
Great, thank you, Mayor Potem Coops. Councilmember Hamada.
Okay, um, it's been, in the last busy, a couple of weeks, pretty busy. On, let's see, February twenty-fifth, I did attend the morning mingle of Councilman Dutton was also there. I think it was a great turnout and I think there's a lot of excitement building in Bellflower, especially with the businesses. Um, on the twenty-seventh, I attended, or I sat through a coronavirus teleconference. Couple hours, I don't get back, but, um, again, as, as, as the mayor mentioned during, um, during the announcements, again, take those precautions, so. Uh, on the second, I did also, again, participate in, in the Read Across America. I went to Albert Baxter and I went, I, I, again, read to the first graders and, uh, actually one of the classes was my grandson's class, so. And I sort of, I, yeah, and I sort of played a game with them. I, I asked the class, I says, one of you is my grandson. And they all start looking, they're looking, like pointing fingers, everybody. Not one pointed to my actual grandson, so, and, I mean, go figure, but, uh, so I asked him to stand up and everybody's looking like, no, 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 that's not. But it, it was a great time, fun. Again, Dr. Seuss is the author of choice for everything. So, um, on the third, I went to my local neighborhood watch. Again, uh, the topic was street speeding. So, uh, they'll be looking forward to hopefully in the near future, a, a report by the consultant and Len. Len out there, kind of shaking his head, yes, that they'll be bringing forward that discussion about traffic calming measures. Uh, on the fifth, I was able to, to go to SCAG, again, you know, participate with the Transportation Committee. And again, you'd be looking for some things in the future. I mean, they're talking about automated buses. Uh, do some kind of pilot program, so. It's kinda scary at first when, when you hear it, but, uh, they're looking at a plan. But I think they're going to start it off with actually still having a backup driver on the automated bus, so. And in the future, they're, you know, because of the archaic gas tax process, they're looking at, uh, again, road user fees, uh, again, based on mileage traveled and so on. So that's something that's going to be analyzed and discussed. This past Friday, I went to the Serritos College Economic Development Summit. And I think bottom line, it's, the goal is to grow the supply of trained people to meet the demands of business. I mean, businesses have plenty of jobs they're, they're, they, they want to fill. But there's not enough people trained, so this is why, um, you know, Serritos College is stepping forward and advancing a lot of their programs there, so. And Dr. Fiero led the summit and he had some presentations, some panels. And they talked about transportation as, again, factoring in on the, um, future. And, um, so it was quite well-attended and, uh, it, uh, it looks very promising for, again, Serritos College to advance the number of, uh, again, train and, and, you know, degreed people that will, uh, uh, fill the, uh, jobs here. Uh, and then just the past weekend, I did attend the Bellflower Looking Better in the, in the, in the northeast part of town. So again, always look forward to those and again, people can have the opportunity to do the yard sale. Next weekend, they'll, they'll have the bins out there, so. But, uh, it's, it's always a good time to talk to the residents out there and, uh, see what's up and how their neighbors. Very, very positive in, 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 in that portion of town. They feel it's, it's calmed down tremendously and, uh, they have some, uh, still some thoughts on, uh, typical things. Again, traffic speeding, uh, road conditions, uh, drainage and so on. And one of their biggest ones is coyotes because of the rivers, so. Everybody's dog is kept in the yards in the house and, uh, they just always hear fights at night, late at night, so. Uh, so it's again, something else that we all need to, uh, be, uh, ready to, to address. And hopefully over time, uh, you know, things will get taken care of, so. That was my last two weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Wow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, so for myself, I also did Read Across America at Ramona Elementary. I do have to say that Ramona Elementary does get their invites in really early. And so I commend them. Uh, and so I think every single year for Read Across America, I've gone to Ramona because they, they're the first ones that invite me, so it's always a pleasure. Uh, Dr. Reyes does a great job at that school. Um, I think I was supposed to have done sixth grade, but that day they were having their field trip or their camping and so. Right? So I ended up doing, uh, a kindergarten class and a fifth grade class. And so they're fantastic, um, teachers and again, Dr. Reyes does a great job. Interestingly, just a little story, I'm married to a teacher. Teachers in Bellflower Unified. So she asked me before, you know, if I was going to go to read to her class. And I said, I'm actually going to Ramona and that was, it was not a good time at my house for a little brief period there. But I survived it and, um, I ended up, as soon as I was done with Ramona, I get the text of, can you come over here? And so I ended up going to her class, so I read to her class as well at the Intensive Learning Center, so that was a great time. Uh, after that, so this past Thursday, I went up to Sacramento. I went to speak with Senator Rubio who is working on a, uh, she's part of a, a working group that the Senate Pro Tem for state has put together on housing. Those of you that have read media reports lately and seen the news over the last month have read and seen about housing and how we're in a crisis with housing and so. We in the LA area were able to successfully defeat those efforts and able to come up with a proposal to replace that. That is flexible enough to work for all cities. And so I went to speak to her about that. She's one of the seven members again in this committee. And today, in fact, the Pro Tem and that group, including Senator Rubio, considered that item. They came out of that while we've been in our study session, so I haven't gone and reported to how it went, but I'm hoping it went well. Again, that would be good for the city Bellflower. And then lastly, on the, the same day, on the fifth, on Thursday, after Sacramento, I came down and, uh, as part of being the president of the LA County Division of League of California Cities, uh, we hosted a meeting, our quarterly meeting for that organization that took place at First Five LA. Um, the headquarters that's over by Union Station and Metropolitan Water District is in California. And so one of the things that I mentioned to that group there is what do cities have to do with First Five LA? And if you know about First Five LA, they work on early childhood education. That's their focus. But I tend to think about things in, in the long run. And one thing that is without doubt is the connection that early childhood education has in terms of being able to, uh, improve the quality of life for all communities, right? And the investment that early childhood education makes in our families, in our communities. So, uh, interesting stat that I always share with people and I think because I'm married to a teacher, I know this, a lot of people don't know this, but by grade three, by third grade, an educator and usually social workers know which child unfortunately will have a rough life and which child is going to have a better life, third grade. And so by that, if you find that out, if you wait till third grade to try to do something about it, it's too late. And it's so, it's so important, it's such a vital statistic that you actually have the prison system, not only here in the state, but nationally, that literally tracks how students are performing in the third grade. Because they're able to forecast from those stats in third grade, on out seventeen years later, how many prison cells they're going to need. That's how powerful that is. And so for me, as a policymaker, as a public elected official, I think it's incumbent upon somebody like me to promote that and to make people aware how important early childhood education is, right? And so, uh, that's the meeting that we had on the fifth. I can tell you that the electeds that attended that meeting were really blown away by, not only that stat, but the difference that we can make as leaders, right? To ensure that in the future, if we address early childhood education and invest appropriately, in the future, it'll lead to less graffiti, it'll lead to less crime, it'll lead to all of us enjoying our communities better. And that's probably highly aspirational on my part, but I truly, truly believe in it, so. So with that, that was a meeting I had on the fifth and, uh, so that was it. Thank you for indulging me on that. And item number sixteen, adjournment, it is by my watch, it is eight oh four PM. And we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, March twenty-three, twenty-twenty. Meeting is adjourned.